Good afternoon and welcome to an online meeting of the Burbank City Council on Friday, August 7, 2020. There will be one period of public comment today on the agenda item only. If you'd like to participate, please call now 818-238-3335. Callers will be placed in a queue until we begin public comment. Will everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll call. Thank you. Councilmember Gabe Alletti.
Here.
Councilmember Murphy.
Here.
Councilmember Telemontes.
Present.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frutos.
TGIF, happy to be here.
Thank you. And Mayor Springer.
Here.
Thank you.
In order to balance the health risks associated with COVID-19 and the public's right to conduct the people's business in a transparent and open manner during the current state of emergency and in the interest of health and public safety, council members will be participating in an online city council meeting. The public will not be able to physically attend today's meeting. The city is providing alternatives for viewing and participating in city council meetings. The purpose of today's meeting is to review the Section 9212 report on the 2020 Burbank Just Cause Eviction and Rent Regulation Measure and to consider options under Elections Code Section 9215. After staff's presentation, city council will hear public comment on this agenda item only. To join the queue for public comment, please call now 818-238-3335. Will City Attorney Amy Albano please present the report?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and I just need to adjust my mic for a second. Thank you. So I'm going to start over. Madam Mayor, members of the city council, member of the public, this afternoon, we're going, we will be discussing the rent regulation measure, and I will go into more detail. I'm going to present our preliminary 9212 report, walk through that with the council, walk through the steps necessary after that, what the council must decide under the Elections Code, and then we will go proceed to public comment, and then council can proceed with deliberations. So with that, I'd like to start by first talking just a little bit about the measure. We just spoke about this issue last Tuesday night on July 28, and the staff report concerning the measure was given, was attachment to this staff report, so I don't want to go into all the same background. I think it's important to note that the, that the council received on July 28 certification that the 2020 Burbank Just Cause Eviction and Rent Regulation Measure was certified to the council, and therefore council had options and chose that night on July 28 to ask for a 9212 report, which is what you're receiving this afternoon. Also, I'd like to start off in that report, it's part of the staff report, I did discuss the pre-litigation or pending litigation, which has now come to conclusion this morning, so I wanted to explain a little bit about that very quickly. So the proponents of the measure originally filed suit against the city clerk, the city council, and the city attorney for rejecting their petition, and that matter was heard on July 23, and the court issued an order saying that the matter should have been certified and to, the court would have to make cer, the county council would therefore have to make certain decisions, which is why we're here. But also, after the proponents filed suit, the city council filed a counter cross complaint. So a cross complaint, the same litigation, arguing that the matter, this measure, was beyond the reach of the voters because of the conflicts with the charter, and that a charter amendment was the appropriate thing to do. This morning, that matter, our cross complaint, our substantive objections, when I say ours, the city councils and the cities substantive objection to that, the measure, was heard by the court. It's, it is a very high bar. We all understood that. This was called a pre-election challenge. But yet, to protect the integrity of the charter, which has, we've had for a long time, has been updated on different occasions by the voters, they're familiar, there was an overall rewrite, renumbering, tinkering with it in 2007 as the most recent total redo and relook at it, and then there's been amendments since then, most recently culminating in 2018 with a change to the way we elect city council members, city treasurer, and the city clerk, as well as changes to the ability to transfer money from the electric fund to the city's general fund. And all of that was done in 2018. So the voters are very familiar with our charter. This morning, the court ruled that we, the city, did not meet that high burden that she saw for pre-election challenge. What she didn't, what she also made very clear is she did not reach the merits of the city's legal arguments. I think that's very important. What she ruled is that she didn't feel she, we met the level, the, as I say, the high bar to her, to entertain, what we asked is that the ballot not be placed, the measure not be placed on the ballot, and that the legal arguments can be brought as what's called a post-election challenge. So the measure, depending what the council does this afternoon, if it goes on the ballot and it's passed by a majority of the voters, the measure may still be challenged on many of the legal issues that were raised in the cities and the city council's cross complaint. So that brings us to this afternoon. So after receiving a 9212 report, we will talk about your choices under the election code, because as I said, the judge did not rule in our favor this morning. She felt that our legal argument should be saved for a post-election challenge, so therefore the council has to make a decision this afternoon on whether to adopt the ordinance outright or to place it on the ballot, and we'll talk about that a little bit more in a few minutes. So let's talk about what is this measure, because we keep talking about this measure. So it's a proposed measure is to change the Burbank Municipal Code, and it's to add just cause eviction procedures, provisions, rent regulations, and an updated landlord-tenant commission appointed by the council but with expansive authority, and we will spend quite a bit of time talking about that. Attachment 5 to today's staff report is the actual initiative ordinance, and that's what members of the public will be voting on if the council chooses to put it on the ballot. If the council chooses to adopt it as its own, again, the initiative ordinance is attachment 5. So which units are exempt from the just cause eviction and rent stabilization provisions? Certain types of housing are exempt, such as units restricted as affordable or owned by government entities or nonprofits, or subsidized by government, including Section 8, or units where the owner shares a bathroom or kitchen with a renter. So those, and there are more exemptions, but these are the key ones that do, might affect property tenants as opposed to some more institutionalized exemptions. And so those types of, those exemptions that I just read, they're exempted from the just cause eviction provisions as well as the rent stabilization. So then, the next question is what units then are exempt from rent stabilization but subject to just cause? So rental units, such as those that received a certificate of occupants, occupancy, which really means they were built after February 1, 1995, single-family homes or condominiums are exempted from the rent regulations, but they're subject to just cause eviction provisions. So again, if your unit was built pre-February 1, 1995, the unit you live in or that you own as a landlord would be subject to the rent regulations as well as just cause. If it's post-February 1, 1995, or it's a single-family home or a single, or condominium, then you would not be subject to the rent regulations but to just cause. So how many units are we talking about? How many would be subject to this rent stabilization provisions of the measure? And we estimate, when I say we, the Community Development Department, I worked closely with them, 22,292 units. The total number may be lower based on the exemptions that exist in the measure, but that's a rough estimate, and that's the number we'll be sort of referring to. And then how many units would be subject to just cause provisions? The total is 24,285, so it's just, there's not a lot of units that are just, subject to just cause because of this, and when we say this, I'm really talking about rental units more than, I'm not really referring to the single-family homes, but the, so these are the figures that we have. And again, they might be a little bit higher, or it might be lower based on the exemptions in the proposed ordinance. The other thing, the, that was attached to the staff report on July 28, and is still, you can obtain it on the Granicus and through our city's website, is the city attorney's summary of the measures. So the just cause eviction, just very, very briefly, allows protections for no-fault and fault evictions, it provides for relocation, and for the rent stabilization part, it allows increases in the rent on an annual basis between 0 and 7% based on CPI. And again, that would fall for those units built pre-1995. So who administers this new measure? There's, it's a 36-page document, ordinance with many new provisions having to do with just cause eviction, rent control, buyout agreements, petitions that can be submitted for fair rate of return by landlords, petitions by tenants saying that they're being charged too much. There's quite a lot happening in this ordinance that's being proposed. So who administers it? So the measure is to be implemented and administered by an updated five-member landlord-tenant commission appointed by the city council. It has expansive and autonomous authority, as we'll discuss in greater detail. The commission will be comprised of no fewer than two tenants and no more than two residential rental property owners. An alternate shall also be appointed by the city council to the commission. As you know, or maybe, I know the council's aware of this, but members of the public might not realize, the city already has a landlord-tenant commission. It does not have these type of expansive authority at all, and is more advisory to the council, and does help work with tenants and landlords on issues around rent issues or other landlord-tenant issues that might arise. So we do have commissions that are serving terms, and most recently, the council just appointed a new commissioner to the landlord-tenant commission. So the ordinance does, and I'm going to use the word ordinance and measure or initiative interchangeably, the current members of the commission remain throughout their current terms, so they are the ones that would be administering this if it passes. So what is the cost to administer their program, to administer this type of just cause eviction, rent stabilization type of ordinance? So the city staff did look at Santa Monica and the city of Berkeley. They both have similar programs, they both are charter cities, and they have these programs set out in their charters unlike this particular case, but nevertheless, a lot of the duties are very similar to what is being asked of this newly constituted, I would say, updated landlord-tenant commission. So we looked at Santa Monica, we looked at Berkeley, and the other reason we chose it, because of the amount of units being monitored. So as you can see on the table in the staff report on page 3, Santa Monica monitors approximately 26,400 units a year. Their annual budget is approximately 5.5 million. Like this ordinance proposes, both of those other cities charge the landlords a per-unit fee to fund the actual activities of the, of the commission. And so Santa Monica's per-unit fee is $209 now, that's what it's set at, I'm sorry, that's what the cost is. So if you divide the number of units into the annual budget, it's 209. Currently, they are only charging $198, which means it's being subsidized somewhere else. And they have 25 staff, it's, they're, it shows, the last column is about what kind of increases they can have. I'm going to speak to Berkeley next, they have 19,500 units, their annual budget is just under $6 million, so their cost per unit is approximately 304, and the, they charge $250, and I think they just set that amount in, when they were doing this year's budget. So these numbers we took from budget documents on both of their websites. And the number of staff that Berkeley has is 24, just under 25, at least that's how many positions they're allotted. Burbank's proposed then would have 22,292 units, so it's really between Santa Monica and Berkeley, so we just basically looked at the two and did an average and came up with $5,717,898 as a cost, and the, so cost per unit would be 257. So if the commission who gets to set the fees that's charged to the landlords would need to set a fee at $257 to support that type of budget. And we would suspect that they would need similar number of employees, because as you can see, the 22,000, almost 300 units falls between both Berkeley and Santa Monica. So again, Santa Monica's adopted budget was 2021, Berkeley's adopted budget was 1920, but rent increase, also, I wanted to just say, as we said earlier, the Burbank numbers may go down, the numbers of units that they actually have to serve may go down based on the exemptions. So what's the fiscal impact to the city? And that's one of the things we looked at, and in terms of, staff didn't have enough time to do an in-depth analysis of fiscal impacts to the city, which could cover like effects on some of our general fund revenues, we just were able, based on the numbers we have, to look at and estimate the cost to the city to run this for the first year. So the measure provides that the commission will finance its reasonable and necessary expenses, including the hiring of staff, legal counsel, as necessary to ensure implementation by charging landlords an annual rent housing fee. However, as they take money in, that will be the fund future, it's perspective, right? So if they go into effect, and in January, the commission establishes a fee, it will take time to get all, who all the units are, get those invoices out, start collecting money. If you think about it, that money's going to need to be for future years. And so the measure requires, during the initial implementation period, it says, the measure requires the city to advance all necessary funds to ensure the effective implementation of the measure, until the commission has obtained enough fees to support implementation. The hard thing is, is it says that the city can ask for reimbursement, but the commission doesn't have to pay the city back for the money that the city puts out. And so as I was saying, since the money collected from landlords will be prospective and likely not available during the initial implementation, the city's general fund may be obligated to advance all the funds necessary to implement the program during its first year. Otherwise, the rental fees collected will never catch up to fund future years of operating expenses. The city currently expends ourselves, we have some affordable units that we administer, and we have ones that we monitor. So not talking about the Section 8, but just our, the units that we monitor, there's 1,600 units, and we have a cost of approximately $203 per unit. And my point of putting this in here is that it shows that a $200 range is not outrageous to think that's what it's going to cost to monitor this program, which means with over 22,000 units, we're looking in the $5 million range. So it would not be out of the realm of reasonableness that the city's general fund may have to advance easily $2 million to maybe $5 million during the initial operation period, which we suspect will be the whole first year. And, and that may also include things like having to come up with office space, equipment, office furniture, supplies that probably they have to do on an annual basis, that's with these others, but to just get started, it takes a certain amount of money besides the regular running of the program. So as I said, the city staff, if the council chooses to ask us at the, when you go through your recommendations, to come back with a more in-depth analysis, that would be one of the things we will look at, is the fiscal impacts to city revenue sources. Okay, conflicting with the city charter. So this is in part what the lawsuit was about, very much in part, this is what the lawsuit was about from the city's perspective and our affirmative suit. And it's still valid to talk about it today, because those impacts to the charter still exist, and they, as I said, the judge didn't reach the merits, and that means she didn't make a decision on whether we're correct or incorrect. So the affirmatives that we're setting out here and have already been pled in our original cross complaint are still on the table and need to be discussed. So this next section talks about what we see as those provisions that are in conflict with the charter. So as I said, it's an updated five-member commission appointed by the city council, and that commission is charged with implementing and administering. So what kind of things will that commission do? They will be adopting rules and regulations, they'll be setting annual rents, they will be setting the annual per-unit fees that landlords must pay, they'll determine annual rent adjustments, they'll adjudicate disputes and issues concerning tenancies, they'll, they can establish penalties, they can hold hearings, conduct studies, surveys, investigations, produce informational materials, and publicize the provisions of the measure. And they report annually to the city council, but it does not provide that the city council has any authority to do anything with that report, basically. So besides implementing the substantive provisions of the measure, which can be found in what's entitled Section 95, 9-5-13, it's subsection F is where I recited many of those duties. So besides implementing the substantive measures, they also have administrative duties, and such as establishing their own budget, hiring all necessary staff, including legal counsel and outside counsel, as well as initiating litigation or intervening. I think it's really important, I'd like to talk about, and read to you one section that I quote in the staff report. The measure provides in Section 9-5-13, subsection N, integrity and autonomy of the landlord-tenant commission. The landlord-tenant commission shall be an integral part of the government of the city but shall exercise its powers and duties under the chapter, independent from the city council, city manager, and city attorney, except by request of the landlord-tenant commission. The landlord-tenant commission may request the services of the city attorney, who shall provide them pursuant to the lawful duties of the office in Section 320 of the Burbank City Charter. The reason I want to emphasize that is it is the part that we think is the key, the linchpin to the arguments of why this conflicts with the charter, because this section wasn't in the findings section, it's not hyperbole, it is a, one of the operative sections on their duties and how they conduct themselves, and when I say they, the landlord-tenant commission. And it says, "They shall exercise its power and duties, independent from the city council, city manager, and city attorney." So as I mentioned earlier, city Burbank's governed by a charter, and we've already talked about how it's under the California Constitution, but we talked about how our electorate is pretty familiar with what our charter is, and we've had one for a very, very long time, and it has been updated on and amended different occasions. So the city council itself can recommend amendments to the charter, but even if the city council wanted to amend the charter, it still has to go to the voters, and that's what happened in 2018 with changes to how we elect our council member or city treasurer or city clerk, same with the transfer of funds from the electric fund to the, to the general fund. That was all initiative measures brought forward by the council, so they were charter amendments, and the voters got to vote on them. And we were very fortunate that our voters passed both those measures. So the city council, as I said, can recommend, and the charter may also be amended by direct initiative, meaning the people of the city can come forward with a charter amendment, and they could bring one, and it would go to the voters, just like a regular initiative. The big difference, though, is an ordinary initiative measure to enact an ordinance like the proponents brought is subject to, they need to have 10% of the registered voters' signatures to qualify for the ballot, whereas if it's a charter amendment, you need 15% of the registered voters to qualify it. So there is a difference, and there is a few procedural differences, but, so the biggest one is how much it takes to qualify for the, to get on a ballot. So the city's adopted charter prescribes the city council, city manager, and the city attorney's duties, obligations, powers. It's very explicit. We often talk about a charter is a constitution, that it's, that's what governs our, how we operate. And besides being, it's correct to say it's a constitution in one sense, but the other sense is, it's also a limit on powers. So when the charter gives certain authorities and certain powers, then those can't be changed without having a charter amendment. So that's something that's sort of keep in mind as we talk about some of this. So under the charter, the city council may provide for commissions as it deems necessary, and prescribe their respective powers and duties. That's the charter, Section 300. But there's also a specific provision about commissions, and that's Section 700, and it says that the city commissions are advisory to the council. So pursuant to the charter authority, the city council, as I've said, has has already established a landlord-tenant commission. And that's been in, is codified in the Burbank Municipal Code because the charter allows the council to add, section 700 specifically allows you to add commission board's committees pursuant to ordinance. So by establishing empowering new commissions with duties well beyond advisory role, the measure conflicts with the council's authority to establish commissions and prescribe their duties. The numerous powers granted by the commission to be exercised independent of the council's authority and express language that the commission is autonomous of the city council, city manager and city attorney conflicts with the charter. The city council has plenary, and I wanted to just go back to that for a moment. There's an argument, as the proponents put forth, that the, the city council, they, we, the, the public, the members of the Burbank constituents, our voters, can put forth an initiative ordinance that the council could. But I think the point that's important here is we go through all of these is that the council, I would argue, does not have authority to contravene the charter. And if the council chose to create a landlord-tenant commission with the authorities that were granted to this one in this initiative measure, that the council would have to do it by charter amendment. And what the council can't do, the voters can't do. So the city council does have plenary power over the city budget, which really means they have all the power over the city budget. That's the council's prerogative. And the city manager is responsible for preparing and submitting a proposed annual budget. But the city council is the one that makes the decision on the budget. The measure, as we, I mentioned earlier, empowers the commission to set its own budget as well as prescribe fees and to collect its own revenues. Since the charter vests budget authority in the city council, the measure cannot grant such powers to the commission without violating the charter. The measure budget provisions also violate the duties prescribed to the city manager. The measure requires the city to advance city funds from the general fund, because that is the only place, in some unspecified amount for the initial funding of the commission's implementation, which again is in direct contravention of the city council's authority over the budget. So we believe that too is a charter, an issue with the charter. Next, the city council and only the city council has the power to direct and control prosecution and defense of all suits and proceedings to which the city is a party or in which it is interested. That's under the charter, section three twenty subsection B. The council is authorized to retain outside legal representation upon the recommendation of the city attorney to assist the city attorney's prosecution or defense of suits to which the city is a party or in which it's interested. Per the city's charter, the city attorney shall direct and oversee any special counsel, the city council, any special legal counsel attorneys that the city council, too many councils there, that the city council employs to assist the city attorney. The measure purports to grant the power to initiate lawsuits, intervene in pending suits, hire their own in-house attorneys or outside lawyers, all without city council's approval or benefit of the city attorney's oversight as required by charter, section three twenty subsection B. Currently, any action brought by the commission under this ordinance is a lawsuit in the name of the city. This commission is not a separate legal entity from the city. And as such, any litigation involving the commission is subject to subsection three twenty B of the charter. The measure as written tries to take itself outside of the subsection of the charter and consequently is in violation. And one of the arguments being made was that, well, subsection three twenty B is only when the city's interested party. Well, any lawsuit involving this commission would involve the city of Burbank. The measure provides the commission may request the services of the city attorney, who shall provide those duties pursuant to section three twenty. So that section of the charter is broad and outlines the duties and obligations of the city attorney as well as containing the subsection on litigation that we just discussed. By the measure giving authority to the commission to require the city attorney to provide them legal services puts the commission in the middle of the city's attorney relationship to the city council. The city attorney is appointed by the city council and accountable to the city council, not some lesser body. This causes another inherent conflict with the charter. Let's move on to the city manager. City manager is the executive head of the city and is responsible to the city council for the proper administration and affairs of the city. And that's under charter, section three fifteen. As the administrator of the city, the city manager may appoint and remove city employees except otherwise provided by the charter. Section three fifteen. Creating a separate bureaucracy in the commission with the ability to hire and fire independent as the city manager is in contravention of the city manager's powers granted by the charter. On the one hand, the measure states the commission is an integral part of the city. On the other hand, it states the commission is autonomous. It can't be both. It is correct that the commission is part of the city since a separate legal entity was not created. But just like our departments like Burbank Water and Power or the Burbank Police Department, it would be part of the city. Neither of those departments operates independently of the city council. More importantly, no part of the city operates independently of the city manager except for the appointed city attorney, elected city clerk and city treasurer as explicitly allowed in the charter. We operate as the charter dictates under a city council, city manager form of government. To insert a commission not accountable to anyone in the city's hierarchy and operating outside of the purview of the city manager is the antithesis to the city's basic form of government established in the charter. The measure for the commission, the measure's vision for the commission and implementation of its provisions could have been accomplished without violating the fundamental basis of the city's form of government and allocation of duties and responsibility among its appointed and elected officials as dictated by the charter. The initiative could have been brought as a charter amendment and we wouldn't be having this discussion right now. And just for example, both Berkeley and Santa Monica's programs were created through their respective charters. We also raised the legal issue that the, that the measure conflicts with the Ellis Act. And the Ellis Act has to do with withdrawals of rental units from the market. And if that was the only conflict, that would not meet, meet the bar for having it set aside or not go to the voters because it's a very small part. But the government code does say that the only people that can adopt regulations pursuant to it is an elected body after notice and public hearing. And the commission that's been established through this ordinance or would be established if it's voted on and approved is not a elected body. So that's just a conflict. So in conclusion, if the proposed measure placed on a November 2020 ballot, staff would return to the council at a later date with a more in-depth analysis concerning the measures' fiscal impact, effect on the land uses of the city, availability, location and effect on housing, the ability of the city to meet its regional housing needs, impact on the community's ability to attract and retain business and employment, and impact on the uses of vacant parcels or land or on any other matters that city council requests. We're almost done. So I'm going to move on to election code, section ninety two fifteen. Based on the court's July 23 ruling and based on her decision this morning, the council must decide whether to adopt the initiative ordinance outright without alteration or place it on the ballot, which would be the November third, 2020 ballot. And that's, those are your two choices. Last time we were here and we talked about election code, section ninety two fifteen, you had three choices, but you already used one of them. And that was to order the ninety two twelve preliminary report. So now you're down to choose. If you want to adopt the ordinance, then I would ask you to adopt the ordinance in attachment one. So you would adopt it today, pass and adopt the same meaning, but it would not take effect until on the 31st day. The second thing, choice, is you may submit this initiative ordinance, again, without alteration, to the voters for the November third, 2020 election. And if council chooses to do that, there are two resolutions that must be adopted by council. One actually calls for the election and placing this measure on the election and requesting election services from the Los Angeles County. I'd like to turn to the resolutions briefly because I think this is important and you've seen this before. So attachment to the staff report, the second page. Whenever a measure goes on the ballot, we, the council has to agree to what the voters will be voting on. We're limited to 75 words. And it has to be in the form that we have here, which shows the measure in a box and there's a yes or a no. And some of the language is dictated by the elections code, but I'd like to read it out loud. It would only take a moment. Shall the measure adding an ordinance would just cause eviction provisions and relocation fees, rent regulations applicable to units built before February first, 1995 with exemptions, limits of zero to seven percent increase in annual rent based on CPI, and updated five-member landlord-tenant commission to implement provisions and administration, including establish a budget, assess fees, hire staff, including attorneys, and initiate lawsuits while acting independently of Burbank City Council, Burbank City Manager and Burbank City Attorney be adopted. So that is how this will be presented to the voters. So if council, almost there, decided to place the measure on the ballot rather than adopting it as its own today, then staff suggests the council decide whether it would want to author arguments against the measure as provided in election code, section ninety two eighty two. And I quote from that section on page seven of your staff report, which says, for measures placed on the ballot by petition, the person's filing, filing an initiative petition pursuant to this article may file written arguments in favor and the legislative body may submit, submit an argument against the ordinance. So if, when you get to this part of the agenda and the council chooses between adoption or submitting it, the initiative to the voters, then the council probably needs to go through a two-step process. One would be, does the council want to author a argument against, which would also include rebuttals? And then two, whether the council as a whole, all of you want to sign it, whether you want to establish something you've done in the past as a subcommittee to actually draft it on behalf of the rest of the council. And again, once you put the measure on the ballot, then the city and city staff may not help in, help you in any way or use city funds to write an argument against the measure. Once it's placed on the ballot, then the city, city funds, city staff must act in a neutral, unbiased, informational-only position. So before we hand it over to public comments, there's one last thing. I'm going to give it to Zazette Mullins, our city clerk. She's going to read through the dates that would be coming up if you choose to put it on the ballot because we're on a truncated, truncated timeframe here, given this is the last day to put something on the ballot. So, and then once the city clerk, Madam City Clerk finishes her going through the dates with you, we would then ask the mayor to open up to public comments. After public comments, we, staff is available to answer questions, take comments and council's deliberation. So with that, Madam City Clerk.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney. I want to, just to give you some dates and information about the arguments for and against. So the dates that are set by the county of Los Angeles and also in the election code, ninety two eighty two and ninety two eighty six, it's recommended that the arguments, the last day to submit the arguments to the city clerk is August fourteenth. And the date for public examination period for the ballot measure is August fifteenth through August twenty four. Also, another important date is the date for rebuttals on either side. That date is due on August twenty four. And the open examination period for the rebuttals will be August twenty fifth to September third. Those are very important dates that we keep in mind. Of course, my office will be posting notices and informing the public if council wishes to place the measure on the ballot. We will have those dates available to the public to know in advance.
And one other quick thing I'd like to just add is the, our ordinance code already requires that when there is a measure, that the city clerk, if it's put on the ballot, will trans, transmit it to the city attorney to write an impartial analysis. And that is due the same date as the arguments, August fourteenth. And once the public exam period, I want to be clear, is for public exam to look at the ballot question as I read it to you, the arguments for and against, as well as the impartial analysis. So thank you. With that, I'd ask the mayor to now go to public comments.
Thank you. Now is the time for public comment on today's agenda item only. If you'd like to participate, please call in now, eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. Remember to lower the volume on your TV or computer and take your phone off speaker when you deliver public comment. Comments are limited to three minutes. We ask for your patience as we finish up with one speaker and move to the next. To participate, please call eight one eight, two three eight, three 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 five. Ms. Mullins, do we have any callers on the line for public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have two callers in queue right now. They're ready to go.
Thank you.
Our first caller is Macees Coda Verdian. Macees, you are live with council.
Hello, Madam Councillors and council members. Appreciate taking my call. I am a landlord in Burbank area and I own a few buildings. And to be honest with you, I'm outraged on these new rules and regulations that have been passing on. Actually, it's more like forced on us for the last few months. I'm not sure if anybody has any concerns as far as, you know, how landlords are dealing with this situation right now. I know tenants that have been getting a lot of help from governor and federal estate by basically allowed not to pay rent. It looks like now until September thirtieth and maybe furthermore. But in the meantime, landlords will still have to pay all the expenses, pay the banks, our taxes and every other expense that's, you know, including it being a landlord. And it's really unfair to have everyone reach through our pockets to solve their problems. If the tenant cannot pay rent, we have to cover up. If federal government can't do it, they just pass this, you know, limitations on evictions and without any ends to it. How are we supposed to even survive in this situation? And are you seeing that you're killing this real estate business in this area? Nobody's even thinking about buying apartments, knowing that they cannot evict anybody if they don't pay rent. I just had a tenant move out after five months of not paying rent. And that $12,000 rent that I lost, and he moved overseas. How long are we supposed to, you know, collect the rent? Does anybody care? Now, on top of this, now you're coming up with this new rules and regulations that we have to pay $200 per unit. For me, that translates to $7,000 more fees a year. How are we supposed to cover all that without being able to collect the rent? I, I think it's really unfair to only look at this whole situation only on the tenant's point of view. And just because we have buildings, that does not mean we're sitting over here and just enjoying collecting rent and we have no other expense to do. If we do not pay the banks in a few months, they'll take over our buildings. There was all our investments and our way of life. So thanks for your time and please consider looking at this.
Next caller, please. Next caller, please.
John, you are live with council.
Thank you, and good afternoon to all. I would like to express a strong disfavor of this initiative as its effect will be contrary to any artificially expressed intent. The city has a housing mandate by the state of California to implement a number of new units to be built in this town. This initiative will discourage any new development. Also, contrary to any real, long-lasting alleged benefits to our tenants, this initiative will not provide more housing, just the contrary. It will not be conducive for businesses in this city. And lastly, this initiative will allow the formation of a runaway rental commission and deprive the city council and management to lose full control of the rental housing market in our town. And I encourage the council to take any evasive measures it deems necessary in this regard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller?
It's coming through in queue.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Constantine Anthony. Constantine, you are live with council.
Hello, council. This is Constantine Anthony. I am relieved that we are finally at this point. It's been a long journey. You know, we spent a lot of time in court and then, you know, I understand that there were issues on both sides and I get it. There were six months of collecting these signatures, so that in and of itself was a period of hard work. And of course, you know, the year plus of drafting this ordinance, talking with legal experts, talking with other cities who passed similar measures, and really crafting this ordinance to be a balance to benefit both renters and small-time landlords. You know, carving out exemptions for the nonprofits that do such great work here in the city of Burbank. We really tried to write something that was, had a universal appeal, that really didn't favor one side or the other, and give that rent board, the updated landlord-tenant commission, the power to really treat people fairly, you know, if landlords are falling behind on their rent, to increase above the cap each year to get them up to fair rate of return. You know, it's, it's a nuanced ordinance. It doesn't, you know, it's not perfect. Nothing in this world is perfect. And so I'm just glad that we're finally here today to put it on the ballot and to see what the voters think. And all I ask is that, you know, in crafting your arguments for or against, please take in mind this small, small fact. The highest vote getter in the history of Burbank City Council was Councilmember Bob Frudos. Congratulations, Mr. Frudos. You got 6,300 votes in 2017. That is an exemplary accomplishment. That's the highest anyone has ever gotten in a city council race in Burbank. And yet, 7,749 people, Burbank voters, signed this petition to put the ordinance on the ballot. So this has a huge favorability factor in the city. And I'm confident that come November, it will pass with flying colors. So just, you know, all I ask, tread carefully moving forward with this. The voters are watching. This is going to be a huge turnout election. There's a presidential ballot in November as well. So just remember that, you know, the public is engaged at this point. My name is Constantine Anthony. I am running for Burbank City Council, and I am a proponent and co-author on this ordinance. If anyone has any questions about me or my candidacy, you can go to Constantine Anthony.
Thank you, Mr. Anthony. Your time is up. Next caller, please.
Armin, you are live with council.
Yes. Good afternoon, council. My name's Armin Simonian. I'm a Burbank resident for over 20 years. And I heard the measure briefly. I didn't listen to it from the first second you talked about it to the last, but I'm convinced it's very complicated and there's way too many rules and regulations. I think every landlord in city of Burbank must completely understand from the A to Z as to exactly what this is all about before it's even considered to go on the ballot. So if anything you can do within your power to delay this going to the ballot, perhaps go to the following year ballot, let's do it. If there's anything you could do not to go on the ballot, by all means, I think you should do that. It's just, I heard the regulations, there's just way too many restrictions on a landlord. It's going to create lots of problems for landlords. I'm all for the tenants as well. I think we can discuss how we can help the tenants. But the whole measure altogether, if it cannot be revised in a fair manner, then it shouldn't even be considered. It's just, I didn't feel like I was even in this country when I heard all these things that were said. I thought I was in a, you know, some other country. I, it's just, it's just beyond comprehension that the city is even listening to this or being subject to the state, the court system, letting, you know, putting pressure on you to listen to this. So I'm all here to help any way I can, and I'm sure 90% of the landlords will be against this. If they really understand what this is all about, I think 100% of the landlords will be against this. And, and we should have many discussions and meetings before we make any decision that's detrimental and it's going to hurt the community at large. I love this town. I've been a resident for this town for 20 years, and I'm going to support this town every way I can, however I can, even provide financial support if I can. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Simonian. Next caller, please.
Deborah, you are live with council.
Hi, this is Deborah Bynne, and I follow this issue closely. I read every word of the 36 pages that were submitted prior and could not believe what I was reading, that they were expecting to be able to force people under these rules. I currently am not a landlord. I have been a landlord in the past. I've been on both sides of this issue. My biggest problem with it is there's no oversight by the city. And I believe if the city's response that the attorney gave would be too hard for citizens to understand, it's kind of convoluted if they haven't read through everything and stayed on top of everything. I think it needs to be pretty simple presented to them. There's no oversight by the city. Yet, if they get sued, it will be the city that has to pay up the lawsuit. They get to set their own salaries. They get to set their own fees, their own responsibilities. They can get themselves raises anytime they want. They can hire any attorney that they want. I mean, there's nothing to keep them from ballooning their budget way beyond what it is, and then the city would need to be picking up the difference. It's just unimaginable, the rules they want to put on landlords, which is already a great deal through the state and through the county. And I understand the problem that renters have, that this is just totally unfair and totally biased. And I think that the city's response for voting needs to be clear-cut and simple to the voters, or otherwise it might get passed. And I, I was born and raised in Burbank. I'm still here, but each time something like this comes up, it's like, maybe it's just time to leave. I would never reinvest in Burbank. And that's a sad statement. So thank you for listening to me, and I don't know what else I can say. It just needs to be clear-cut and simple to the voters.
Thank you, Ms. Bynne. Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Margot Router. Margot, you are live with council.
Hello, council. You know me as a proponent of this measure, and I would just like to briefly reference the callers who've come before. I fully support your right to vote against this measure. And what we've seen the city try to do is to take that power away from you and away from the people to put something on the ballot for residents to vote on. I just want to step back a second on this because if we, this was an attempt to sort of price us out of being able to stand up for our rights to initiative as voters, as residents of this city. If we hadn't had the pro bono support of our legal team, you would have succeeded in intimidating us from standing up for ourselves on this when clearly we've seen that we followed procedure and we did it right, and it should have been certified for the ballot and packaged up for the county for the ballot. So I just want to point that out. I feel like it's a little bit of a, if I may, a bad landlord would do something like this where they say, hey, I'm going to evict you, you know, to have any chance at doing anything about it, you have to hire a legal team. So good luck with that. Whether or not you're actually a bad tenant, you're going to court. So I just want to mention that because it bears mentioning. Also, there are arguments that still float around on the Staff Report about how the initiative conflicts with the powers of the manager, city manager, city attorney. I would like to quote the tenet of judgment, which will go into the final judgment. "The city's arguments do not relate to the central question of whether the electorate has the power to create the commission by initiative. Moreover, petitioners make plausible counterarguments in response to city's contentions. For instance, petitioners argue that exceptions in 315B3 are relevant to the scope of the city manager's hiring powers applied here, and also that the initiative is silent or ambiguous as to how commission staff are hired and that, and the city manager's role in that process." Meaning, the city manager can absolutely hire these people. We didn't say whether they should be hired by some, by the commission. The city manager can absolutely do that. So I just wanted to point that out as well. These arguments that we presented have merit, and we may not, we may not see another, the city may not win after the election either. So just making that clear. Also, Constantine's website is K-O-N-S-T-A-N-T-I-N-E Anthony dot com. Thank you very much.
Next caller, please.
Paul, you are live with council.
Thank you very much. Dear Mayor Springer, Vice Mayor Frudos, and fellow council members, my name is Paul Herman, and I'm a candidate for Burbank City Council. I'm calling in today to encourage this council to instruct the city staff to continue the process of requisitioning a more comprehensive 9212 report in order to determine the fiscal impact of the proposed rent control initiative. While it is clear that Burbank suffers from a housing crisis across the board of all different types, including low-income, senior, and workforce housing, this initiative is the poison pill of effective public policy to remedy the situation. If the goal is to create more affordable housing options in the city, then we know with historical certainty that this initiative will have the exact opposite effect. Look at the most expensive place to live in this country, New York, San Francisco, Los Angeles, and Santa Monica, and you will find the most stringent rent control laws around. Those rent control laws, however, pale in comparison as to what is being proposed in this initiative. I think it is important for Burbank residents to know that this initiative will cost the city over $5 million to fund annually. It will create an autonomous and unaccountable rent control board. It will reduce the supply of available housing and thereby increase rents. It will disincentivize landlords from maintaining their properties, reducing the quality of life for renters in our city. But most importantly, it will harm our kids and our grandkids as future generations of people living in Burbank will be left out of this rent control lottery. They will have fewer housing options to choose from, and those options that do exist will be more expensive and less appealing. Please make sure Burbank residents are aware of these facts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
George, you are live with council.
Hello, council and Madam Mayor. Thank you for taking my call today. I have read the proposed initiative. I read every word of it, and I wonder how many people truly have read every word of it because the initiative is completely one-sided and there's no balance involved. The only balance involved in the initiative are the necessary concessions that were made to prevent the initiative from encroaching on constitutionally protected rights. And the initiative, as proposed, harms the generous landlords who have been giving their tenants discounts for years. Now those discounts have become entitlements, and they are forced upon the generous landlords. The proponents have admitted before that they are socialists and that they have a low rent at their current unit, so there is a conflict of interest there. We have a capitalistic economy, which we have fought in the streets, fought in the beaches, and fought in the hills for. And the housing shortage that we are undergoing right now is a problem. This initiative threatens to worsen the problem because it is merely addressing the symptom. High rents attract competition, but if high rents are suppressed, then that actually detracts supply from the market. As a result, marginal rents actually increase. Make no mistake, this initiative is bad for Burbank. It's bad for the Burbank economy, and it's bad for the Burbank homeowners. And I call upon the Burbank homeowners to vote against this proposed initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Just to let the mayor know, we have currently three calls in queue.
Thank you.
Our next caller is Jim Lane. Jim, you are live with council.
Thank you. My name is Jim Lane. I have been a resident of Burbank for 20 years. My first three years was as a tenant, and I've been a homeowner for the last 17. I have never been a landlord. I'm, I'm calling in support of this measure. I like the idea of it being put on the ballot as well. This was really a citizen-generated initiative, which I also like and support. A few callers back, somebody mentioned that, you know, because of the very unique and unfortunate financial economic situation that we're all living under right now because of COVID, that the timing on this measure is bad and so on. I just need to remind people that this has been, you know, been going on long before the COVID hit. So I think the spirit of this measure is, the spirit of this is, you know, when we're living in a world without this, you know, horrible pandemic. So I just want to say that. And then, and then also, you know, given Burbank's at least recent history with kind of being, in essence, not really, how to say this, absent in a lot of ways in terms of what's actually going on in the city, and specifically the loss of affordable housing and rentals. You know, I, I use the Tularia Project all the time as sort of, you know, the poster child for what went wrong in terms of the city. for what went wrong in terms of the city, kind of leaving it to the laissez-faire approach, assuming that developers would in essence try to take care of those who were displaced. And that clearly is not the way to go. So, in short, I support a commission being set up. We live in a city that is surrounded by a much bigger city and county where real estate and development has always been a huge issue. So, even though state and county regulations are in place, I feel that because Burbank where we're situated, we have very, very unique kinds of situations that I think the commission could address. So, in closing, I support this to go on the ballot in the fall and so then the entire city can come out and make a decision at the ballot on this particular issue. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Laura, you're live with counsel.
Good afternoon, counsel. I'm glad I have the opportunity to address you all today. I have a major concern with not having rent controls in the city. The rents have got extremely high. It's becoming an elitist city where most people are not going to be able to afford to live, especially with what is going on today. And I feel that you should not be forced out of living in an area that you enjoy because you can't afford to pay your rents. I understand landlords need to pay their bills as well. I've been an owner, I've been a renter, but I feel that it is out of control. And the initiative, I was listening to most of it today when you were speaking prior to this, and I'm going to tell you, it is mumbo jumbo. It needs to be made very clear. It needs to be made very concise so that both sides know where we stand. But many cities have rent caps and it's about time that Burbank also starts considering that we cannot continue to go on like this. We pay higher sales tax than anywhere else as it is and you're going to make the city something that nobody can afford to live in, but yet the ones that are paying the rent are the ones that keep you guys alive because without people working in the city and being able to live where they work, you're going to have a major issue on your hands. And I just feel that you need to hear from a tenant as well as the landlords that this needs to be considered very, very, very carefully and worded so that everybody understands. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Tim Bissell. Tim, you're live with counsel.
Okay, thank you. Hello, mayor and council members. I'm calling to just really express my deep concern for the litigation that the city has gotten into to try to keep this measure off the ballot. I've signed two petitions to have initiatives put on the ballot, one for 777 Front Street and another one for the rent control measure. And the city has taken action to keep both of those off the ballot. Now, this is really having, I think, a detrimental effect on our democracy. I mean, basically what the city is saying is, "Look, folks, no point in signing any initiatives out there in the field. When somebody comes with a petition, forget it because the city council is not going to let it be on the ballot anyways. And unless you've got a truckload of money to fight him in court, you're not going to get anywhere." It's voter suppression. It's nothing less than that. And I really condemn the actions that you've taken to keep this off the ballot. There's arguments on both sides about the legality of this and whether the rent control board has too much power and whether it's a charter issue or whatever. That's fine. Put this on the ballot, let people vote it up or down, and if it goes through, those issues can be settled afterward. But to try to keep these things off the ballot, not let people speak, not let nearly 8,000 people who signed the petition have a right to vote on it, it's just simply undemocratic. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Michael, you're live with counsel.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Michael Hastings, longtime member of the city of Burbank for well over 50 years. And, you know, I've been following this very closely and the one thing that caught me in this hearing, I was not going to call in, but to hear that, you know, 7,700 signatures were gathered and yet one of our council members never even got that many votes. I was approached three times about signing the petition and I know a number of people were, and it was a very disingenuous approach because we weren't told the truth about what this was going to be and we also weren't supplied with the full information. So, it always sounds great that you got a lot of signatures, but it all depends on how you get those signatures. Also, I'm not a landlord, so this doesn't affect me directly. I know it will affect all of us cost-wise, it will cost the city money. But one of my biggest problems is when the decision makers on this new committee are not accountable to the people, are not accountable to the elected officials, that really worries me because who can you go to? And the fact that the author and proponent of this is running for city council, Constantine Anthony, voter beware because if this is his idea of fair and honest government, that we don't get a say-so, I'm frightened by that. But I'm glad that the city council is really carefully looking at this and I am glad that you really carefully looked at the specifics of this and not the general title of rent control. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next caller, please.
Madam Mayor, I do have, I don't have anyone in queue and I don't have any more callers coming in.
Public comment is closing shortly. If you wish to participate, excuse me, call 818-238-3335.
So, we've had the lines open for quite some time and I'm just informing you that the last one that had been in queue has already spoken.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, I now declare a public comment closed. And now, colleagues of mine, we move on to discussion.
Or questions, Madam Mayor, as well.
Yes, questions. And, right, and if you have any comments, yes, council member Gable Luddy to our callers.
Well, I first of all want to thank all the callers for calling in and weighing in on the issue. Frankly, I had a couple of questions for the city attorney based on the callers. One note is that, I guess it's my question and that is, Madam City Attorney, is this measure means controlled in any way? In other words, is the initiative set up so that people who have lower income are, have their rent stabilized, but people who are not, you know, continue to work their way through? Is it means tested in any way?
No, it is not, which is typical of most rent stabilization, rent control ordinances. They are not means-based.
You mentioned earlier about the landlord-tenant commission and I heard a couple of different opinions, but is there any oversight to the landlord-tenant commission and its hiring practices and its budget? And can it just turn its back on the council if the council loans money and it chooses not to pay it back? Is there any oversight for this kind of operation?
So, what I would say is that the commission, as I said, is not a separate legal entity from the city, so they would have to buy by the city rules. At least, that's my opinion. It's just, but there is no oversight. There is no accountability. The only accountability is accountability that council has now, what any commission is. The council may remove members of a commission. That's still within the council's discretion, but otherwise, no. And the, there is no requirement for the money to be repaid. And if you consider the money that the city council will have to allocate under the terms of this from the general fund, it won't, it doesn't have to be repaid. And in some ways, if you think about how this is going to work, I don't think it's really plausible or feasible that it could ever be repaid because they're going to start collecting money and they're going to need to build up money to pay for the ensuing years. Somebody has to fund that first, whether it's six months or a year, and I would like to suggest it's probably going to be a year because otherwise they're never going to have enough money saved up to pay moving forward, right? Because it's perspective. So, the council and the city and the city general fund is on the hook for that, the first outlays for this program.
Now, there was an assertion that the judge's decision today was essentially setting aside the city arguments that they weren't meritorious. That's not my understanding of the essence of the ruling. Can you clarify, please?
Absolutely. The judge said, and said it in her ruling, but also clearly said it on the record when the discussions were, it's called oral argument, when that was done this morning, said, "The court's tentative, the court's decision was not breaching the merits of the city's arguments." And what she ruled was that she did not feel we met the bar for a pre-election challenge, but that the validity of what the city brought forward could be tested post-election. Meaning, if the measure, if the council chooses to put it on the ballot, if they garner enough votes to have it passed, then it would, then the, sorry, then someone could sue over the measure and raise the legal issues and infirmities that the council raised in their cross complaint.
One of the callers was asking if we could take some more time on this and I'd like you to just clarify why we cannot.
No, the council has no ability to take more time. Measures have to be on the ballot, for the November ballot, have to be placed on the ballot by today, August 7th. The court's original order from July 23rd said, you know, the city council, you have to act one way or the other by August 7th. So, there is no time to hit pause and wait. And, you know, part of the reason we're here is because of the litigation.
And that was my final question and I think one of the speakers raised this as well as he implied that we're refusing to let the voters vote. And I have said before, and I say again, we're going through a process. We think that at least we should look at the effects of an initiative like this that has been judged to have qualified, but we're going through a process. And I don't know, Madam City Attorney, if you can elaborate a little more on the path of our process, but he put it in terms of suppressing the vote and I think that that is a very serious comment to make, which is not true at all. So, I just ask if you could amplify a little bit on the process.
Yes, I would be happy to and I would agree with you. I don't believe that's a correct characterization, although that has been bandied about of late. You know, the process, initiative process takes a long time. There are a lot of hurdles. There are a lot of requirements and minutia that must be done correctly through the process. The city clerk, the city attorney, the council, we don't make the rules up. We try to follow them. The city clerk has a ministerial duty to receive those initiatives, to look at whether they complied with the election code. She made a ministerial decision that they did not. She consulted with legal counsel, myself, and outside expert on election law and the petitions were rejected. The proponents have the right to file suit, which is what they did. And because they did, we felt, as your legal advisors, that the council, if it wanted to raise these issues about the, what we believe are infirmities to the charter, that we really needed to bring them in that same suit. And that's, and it's called a pre-election challenge. And given the posture we were in, and that is what happened. And the dates were in my earlier staff report of what that process looked like and how we went through it with the court. So, I believe the original petition against the city was filed on June, I'm looking, I think it was June 11th. And then the city filed suit on, I believe it was...
The 26th.
Thank you, June 26th. That's what I was going to say. And the hearing, because it does take priority, normally lawsuits takes years, but this kind of thing is given priority and there was a hearing on the first part of the suit on July 23rd and a hearing on our part of the suit today. That's a really quick turnaround. That's less than two months to hear an entire case. And because it's so truncated is one of the reasons I think that the court today ruled that it should be a post-election challenge and she wouldn't grant the pre-election challenge to it. So, I don't believe by any means that this is suppression of the voters. It's really these, the council has put other matters on the ballot. These are things that have to follow a process and that's what we've been involved in. And this afternoon, council's going to decide. If the council decides not to adopt the ordinance, then the council will be putting it on the ballot and that's how the process works. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I want to thank all the callers on both sides that called in. This is definitely what I believe is a very passionate issue on both sides. I got to tell you, I read this and one of the reasons why I supported the litigation was because I needed some questions answered through the legal system. Anytime you allow, in this case, an initiative to go forward, I honestly believe the people entrusted me to go through these complex issues and really look at everything and make a wise decision as we're moving forward. So, I support the people's votes, but we have 107,000 people and 8,000 signatures to put it on the ballot. In my mind, I want to do my homework because when we're looking at creating another government body that is not accountable to anybody, just itself, I worked on the charter back in, I believe, 2007 and then I worked on it again. We are a chartered city. There's a reason why Burbank has a high real estate market. People come here because they always say, "I'm glad we're not like the city of LA." And one of the things that scares me about this is that we're adding $5.7 million to the operating budget to create an independent, should the voters approve it, that's going to them. But when this first came to me, part of my questioning is, is this really within the best interest of the people at large based upon our history as a governance of a chartered city that has basically a city manager type of run government? So, it is important that I seek legal counsel. It is important that before this goes to the ballot, I exhaust every possible situation so I can explain to the voters, "Hey, look, this is the questions that we asked, but you know what? It went to a judge, they made a decision, I'm going to move forward." But I got to tell you, if I don't question as a current council member for the future of the city that challenges our charter, the governance that gives us the power, this measure here, it's... measure here, it's well-intended to protect people to stay here and not raise their rents, but at the end of the day, that's $5.7 million to create annually, to create an unaccountable form of government when we are a chartered city that has a city manager form of government. It totally destroys that. I just don't understand, and I don't know if the people that signed the petition know that it's going to cost them whatever their rent is, as a hypothetical in this conversation. If a renter's currently paying $1,500 and they're protected by no more than 3%, I don't know where they're going to add after the first year according to this measure. It's $257 added to every single rentor unit, based on the proposal that I have in front of me, to basically fund this brand-new independent body that is not accountable to anybody, because they're not going to be voted in. The city council's going to appoint these members, and the council cannot give them direction. But I don't know who's going to pay that additional $257 added to everybody's rent, because it's right in the proposal, cost per unit. So that I wanted to question. And two, just talking about Burbank, we're 17 square miles. You know, we're a chartered city that people say, "God, you know what? I love Burbank. You guys have a better form of government than other cities." Well, I want to protect that, and that includes protecting what the people have said through our city charter. Because that's the real question that I'm having, is that this is obviously in direct conflict. And most important is, I don't know if the author and the co-author really looked at, you know, Burbank's an expensive city to live. And it's not just because, you know, we're, you know, one caller was absolutely right. We're paying 10.25 sales tax, but that's spread across the board. And when we have roughly 150,000 people that come to work every day, and they still can't find a place to live, and we're, our goal is to provide low-cost housing and more housing, I need to ask these type of questions. Because if you look at Santa Monica and you look at West Hollywood, once they pass their rent control, it's one of the highest to move into because it's, the rent is so high. So not being a dead horse here, I appreciate callers on both sides, and I can assure you, myself and my colleagues, we are doing our homework. We are questioning this, and we're not just presenting it to the voters just to present it. We are doing the checks and balances, that we are here to protect the charter. And you know what? Dissect it, digest it, question it, but now it's going to the voters. And I know all five of us support the right of the people to vote on this, but I just want people to understand, we're doing our duty to, you know, to question this, seek legal counsel. Obviously, it went to a judge, and they ruled different, and we're okay. We're moving forward. But those are just my thoughts, but I just want people to understand, this creates an independent form of government that's going to cost the taxpayers $5.7 million. We have high real estate market here because Burbank is a very desirable place. Other councils before my time worked really hard to put us in this position, and the five of us are working really hard to continue to protect our city. And anytime somebody's going to challenge the charter, it is our responsibility to make sure that what goes to the ballot, one is authentic and truthful, and it protects the services and what we like in Burbank. But thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Councilmember Murphy?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say to, I want to answer a couple of the questions from the callers, the people that wanted us to stop, sit down, talk about it, postpone it for another year, that's off the table. That can't be done. Obviously, we would like to talk about it. There are all kinds of questions that we have. There was another comment that, you know, that we were suppressing votes. Boy, I sure don't see myself ever being in that category. I know with the 777 Front Street Project, there was a petition circulated around, but as far as I know, it never came to fruition. I don't think we had anything to do with preventing that. And it was a really strange petition because it was being pushed by a hotel workers' union, and apparently their main goal was to block the hotel that was going into that project. So I never understood that from the beginning. As far as this particular initiative, in my opinion, and it's my opinion, I've read it three times, it tries to do too much. Instead of trying to do something really simple, two of the words that jump out is rent stabilization and no-fault eviction. If they would have just done that, then we wouldn't have this problem. The problem is they tried to do too much. It's 36 pages, it's somewhat obtuse, to say the least. It basically takes a truck and it drives right through the middle of our charter. Now, to make this very simple, people say, "Well, why are you making a big deal about the charter?" The charter is the basic document that says who we are. It's like a constitution of the United States, it's like the constitution of the state of California. It's important. It sets out what the rights and the privileges are, and it sets out protections. This thing is a disaster to our charter. It creates an independent body that has no rules or regulations, can spend whatever money they want, get us in and out of all kinds of different lawsuits. It's a nightmare. I think that the people that drafted it, I heard somebody say they took a year and a half. Well, it looks like they took at least a year off and just used a half, because it's a mess. It's, it's not well-done. Somebody else said that you need a truckload of money to fight the city, and that's not the case at all. You heard one of the people say that they had pro bono representation. Well, pro bono means that somebody does it for free. In this particular case, I guarantee, and I will stake my reputation on the fact, that their lawyer will present a bill to the city for this litigation. And, you know, I'll be happy to provide those costs whenever they show up. I think that that's just untrue. I think that other statements about how carefully they drafted it is completely untrue. It's a mess. They just tried to do too many things. And we don't, we don't have any choice but to protect our charter and to protect our citizens. It's got nothing to do with the subject matter. And the people that want to divide this into tenants against landlords, well, that's just like dividing the country into Democrats and Republicans. We've got to learn to talk to each other, we've got to learn to work together, and if we don't, the body's going to die. So it will be going on the ballot, but it's a mess, and I sure wouldn't want to see it go on the ballot like this. I'd like to see it be streamlined and make sense, and it doesn't do either. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontes?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to thank everyone that took the time to come to our early session council meeting and provide your concerns, perspectives. I just want to start out with the one, a couple of gentlemen said they were trying to take the vote away from the public. That is not even close to what I'm thinking. My colleagues have already stated it. It's not in their mind whatsoever. So when you say something, stick to the facts. Don't make up your own opinion of what you think is happening, because that is not right, that is not truthful. So you shouldn't be saying something like that and blaming the five council members on that. The other thing is, it was mentioned about this will, this initiative will discourage developers, so take evasive measures. We can only take a couple, all we can do is either approve it tonight or approve it to be on the ballot for November 3rd. Those are only two decisions we've got to make. And one of those two, we have to make a decision on. So we'll be discussing that after oral responses. One of the speakers mentioned it's a complicated ordinance. This measure must be considered at the, and I have to say that this measure is going to be considered at the ballot box. That's my opinion. And you can't, it is a complicated ordinance, but that's the way it was brought forward. We can't, we can't change it. Madam City Attorney, I believe you only have 75 words to the, to the measure, or is that what we're limited by?
That's correct. For the ballot question, we only have 75 words.
75 words. So we have limitations there as well. Ms. Deborah Mindy or Minty? I hope you don't leave Burbank. Please. You've been here a long time. I want you to remain a Burbank resident, because this is still a fine community. So please, don't leave Burbank. What else? It was mentioned also, worded, so everyone understands, it's a complicated issue. It's going to be difficult to understand. So, you know, if it's more convoluted, more complicated to understand, I don't know how voters are going to take it or to respond to it, but it's difficult. I'd like to thank former mayor Michael Hastings for weighing in. Thank you for your comments. Other than that, I just want to thank everyone for coming. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I too would like to thank everybody, and this is the democratic process. Referring to Mr. Hastings noting that some of the petitioners were disingenuous and he had been approached three times, I have to say that I've heard other creative purposes for the petition, and, but I was told that, you know, there is First Amendment protection, so they can pretty much get as creative as they want to in describing a ballot initiative. But I also want to, on social media, it was written by the proponents that we had received 100 emails in favor of just taking it to the voters, you know, pro-rank control. And that is true. We did get 100 emails, and, but less than half of them are from Burbank residents. And 48%, to be exact. And in my pledge of transparency to you, I'm letting you all know that, because you may have read it out there, but less than half of them are Burbank residents. And I have to tell you that we had, there were, we got two emails from Mississippi, three from Louisiana, two from Ohio, one from Iowa, and then most of the others are from the LA area, either LA city proper or just outlying suburban areas. And so this is the democratic process that's taking place right now. And in response to the concern out there, and we can't change the wording, Ms. Soroco, this, as Councilmember Talamontes noted, we can accept it as it is or vote to put it on the ballot. And, but in response to, please take an in-depth look at the impacts of this, I would like to, it's in our staff report, but for the housing component of it, if we could please include impacts to supply, affordability, quality, rental rates on the uncontrolled units, and if there is any increase, like in condo conversions, that might be helpful to note, and the fiscal impacts, please, if we could include the impact on property value, and consequently, if there are impacts on the amount of real estate tax that we collect, and then therefore, the impact on services and our schools that rely on real estate taxes, and on our services that we provide. And if there are any, in terms of the housing part of it, the impact, what, how does gentrification play into that? And so I know that the categories were broad, but that's what I would like to see included. And even the, I won't get too specific. I think we'll keep it kind of broad, but just so that we understand, I mean, now it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that our voters and our residents are completely and transparently informed about this measure and about the potential impacts of it. And so, let's see if I've addressed everybody, and I think so. I just so appreciate everybody calling in, and we're doing our best here to represent and protect our residents and make sure that their rights are protected. And so now, we move on. I might need a little bit of guidance here, so we...
So if the council doesn't have any more questions about staff, then I would just walk through the recommendations.
There is another question. Yes, Councilmember Gableletti.
I cannot be able to answer this, Madam City Attorney, but I wondered if the substance of this measure provides for pass-through. For example, we recently had a vote on property tax here in the city to help our schools. That would go to the units, the building itself. And I guess if you can't answer it today, I'd like that to be part of any further study that we do about the availability of pass-through for certain kinds of initiatives that other jurisdictions may undertake, including our school district here in the city.
I am not prepared to answer that today. There are provisions about pass-through, but it deals with capital improvements, that type of thing, to the property. And so I'd have to, I would, we will come back. When we come back with a more in-depth analysis, that's one of the things we'll make sure we hit.
Yes, Vice Mayor Frutos.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to ask the city clerk, because this came up by the co-author. Madam City Clerk, how many registered voters do we have in the city of Burbank? The latest count?
Thank you. As of the report I received about a couple of weeks ago, we're up to 70,000, I want to say 270, something, 72, 73 voters. And this is a fluid number. It goes up and down based on people that move in, register, or move out. So, but that report was as of a couple of weeks ago.
So we have roughly about 72,000 voters, roughly?
70,200.
70,200 voters. Okay, so through conversation, we have about 70,000 voters, and 7,000 signed the petition, right?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Yes, Councilmember Murphy?
Actually, yes. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, but I was just thinking, and Bob got me thinking about that. So if this had been done properly and had been labeled as a charter amendment, then they would have needed 9,300 signatures, I believe. Correct? Roughly?
So we require 10% of, based on our population, it's 10%?
It's 15 for charter amendments.
Yes.
Trust me.
Oh, yeah, for charter amendment. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Yes, you're right.
It's my fault. I mumble a lot.
No, no, it's okay. Thank you.
Just, I just, I just thought we should be aware of that.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Gableletti.
Councilmember Murphy made me think of something also. I think it's a real disappointment that there wasn't an effort to do the charter amendment at the same time, to either do a simplified ordinance, as you said earlier, Councilmember Murphy, do something that was very basic, or do a charter amendment at the same time. My concern is that this will raise an expectation that cannot be met because of the collision with all the requirements of our city charter. And that could be a huge disappointment to those who are supporting it, that we end up in a situation where... end up in a situation where we've raised expect, the proponents of the initiative have raised expectations, they did not do a charter amendment, which would have made it easier to implement, and we end up with the, uh, problems that the city attorney stated so clearly when she did her opening, and I think also that Councilmember Murphy so clearly laid out, when you called it, and pardon my phrasing, a mess.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frutos.
Again, looking at this at 30,000-foot level, so we have, as an example, the utility, which is an enterprise, they're not independent, they still have a board, make recommendations to the council, and they come under to the city manager. Any legal circumstances, even though they have their own lawyers, they still have to go through our city attorney for advice, even, even our, uh, no? I take it...
I was just going to say, they don't have their own lawyers. The lawyers that, we have a staff attorneys that work with Burbank Board and Power like we do with all of them, and any, uh, legal counsel that's engaged is under the auspices of the city attorney's office. Just so we're clear.
And where I'm going with this, thank you for correcting me, where I'm going with this, that there's accountability. They're just not doing their own thing. And this really, um, sets up basically either false expectations or it really is going to challenge the governing document of our city that's been existing over, what, 105 years? Jess, you were the centennial mayor? And that's the governance that, to me, we need, you know, we just can't, without a good, you know, discussion and debate and let the people decide. But what's at stake here is that document that governs, there's no other department that works independent. They all, there's checks and balances. That's what I'm trying to get at. Thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, um, Councilmember Talamontas.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Madam City Attorney, are you aware, or maybe the city clerk might be aware, of, of other commissions that are set like this that are being proposed, uh, in other cities?
So there are, there, thank you, Madam Mayor, if I may. The, um, there are other cities that have this setup. And one of the things, um, that we pointed out was that the ones that have this setup, um, have been done, that are charter cities, have been done through amendments to their charter. And the only, uh, so Berkeley and Santa Monica are very, very similar to what is being proposed here. Uh, there was a recent proposal similar, not exactly the same, as the, uh, city of Sacramento. In that case, um, if, they were proposing by charter, the whole thing was proposed as a charter amendment, but they were proposing in, uh, elected board in the court last week, um, a similar situation. Uh, a writ was brought by the proponent to have it put on the ballot. The city sued, countersued, as we did for a pre-election challenge, and they were successful. And in that case, the court said charter amendment wasn't enough, they needed a charter revision because it was such an impact to the, uh, government, form of government by having a newly elected. So, uh, a different outcome than we got today. Um, and not exactly the same situation. So there are cities that have these type of boards, and like I said, the ones that have it, um, have done it through charter amendments where they're charter cities like us.
And that's where it concerns me, the fact that, uh, there's no oversight. I mean, who do, what, who do they answer to? You know, uh, and someone's mentioned, well, the city council can remove them. Well, they can't be removing, you know, people every six months or so. Uh, and on what basis do we remove them? Because we don't like them, they made the wrong decision, they didn't, you know, their decision was not what I was looking for or three of the council members were interested in. Uh, so it just kind of becomes so convoluted, it, it's just so challenging, uh, not only for, uh, for the commission itself, but for the council members and the community. So this is not good for the community, to have so many questions, uh, that are, that can be challenged. Uh, so they don't work under the umbrella of the city, but they do work under the umbrella of the city. Uh, it's yes or not, or I mean, are the city, uh, is that a city commission or, or they're on their own? You know, there's just too many questions and not enough answers. So, thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Frutos.
And, and, uh, at least for the public's information, talking about Berkeley, they have a total of 19,548 units. Their annual operating budget for this government entity that works independent of the city council is 5.9 million. So that costs an additional $250 on an average for these units to manage this program that the renters are added to pay for this. They hire 24 city people, employees, to run this program, and their CPI formula is at 2.1%. So, again, I'm just questioning, we're, we're literally at 5.7 million what the proposal has. That's $257 per unit to run this program after the first year because the city needs to come up between $2 and $5 million. And I know we don't have it that easy, but if it passes, this is what we have to start talking and thinking about. And we're going to hire, under the recommendation, 25 more city staffers. And when you add an attorney and executive and everything, that's over probably $100,000 plus positions added to the budget. Just something to think about for members of the public as this is moving forward.
Thank you. I have one more thing to add about transparency and, um, our city clerk during her, doing her ministerial duty, duties and the creativity, um, of the purpose of the petition by the signature gatherers and how the pages, there were some omissions that, um, she felt weren't in compliance with the election code, that if somebody did want to read all 30-plus pages of it to really understand what was going on, that, that, that information was missing. Um, so, anything else? Okay.
The council, if they're done deliberating or questions, and I'm not sure where you are on deliberation, but the first recommendation is to note and file the report you received today and then direct staff to return at a later date with a more in-depth report as set out. And then the really important parts is you need to decide what you're going to do under 9215. And then if you put it on the ballot, then you need to decide if you're going to do an argument in favor. So, um, and I see that a council member has their hand up.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy. You're muted.
Sorry. So moved, note and file? And then, um, we want to get a, a more thorough report on the 92, uh, 15.
9212, correct.
9212.
Right.
I'll second that. I have a question.
Yes.
For the council.
Yes.
Um, this 9212, we, it behooves us to get an independent third party to prepare it, to prepare portions of it. I'd just like to put it out there for the council to consider.
I agree.
Madam sitting...
Is everybody in favor of that? To have an outside firm do it? Yes, so it's, right. Great, thank you for bringing that up.
So if you would just add that, if you wanted, um, that was the intention, but you could add that as part of the motion.
All right. So amended?
So seconded.
Okay. And, and so you got all of, like, my suggestions on that expanded 9212. Thank you.
Yes, and we have your suggestions that were made, council member's suggestions from last meeting as well.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay. So we'll do it.
Ready for vote?
Yes, thank you.
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes, on recommendation number one.
And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, yes, Councilmember Murphy?
Counting noses and hearing comments, it seems pretty clear that, uh, we don't want to, uh, adopt, adopt this as is, and I would suggest and make a motion that we, um, put it on the, uh, the ballot for a decision.
So that motion would be submit the measure ordinance without alterations to the voters for the November 30th, November 3rd, 2020 election by adopting the resolution, calling for election, attachment two, and resolution requesting consolidation of services of Los Angeles County, attachment three.
I was going to say that, but I wanted to make sure that everyone knew where I was going, so we could discuss it if we want to.
Second.
Okay.
Okay. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontas?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
So the last item for council to consider is whether, and I will then leave it to you for that discussion, is whether council would like to submit an argument in opposition to the, uh, against the ordinance that you just voted to put on the ballot. And as a reminder, uh, this would have to be done totally by the city council, the staff would not be able to be involved in that.
Okay. So do we need a motion for that or just, okay?
The question.
Yes, Councilmember Murphy.
If we don't, uh, submit the argument, do we just wait for the first person to, to volunteer from the community? I mean, what are our choices? And we don't have much time, 14 days, less than 14 days? Let's...
It's due on August 14.
Yeah, so it's like tomorrow.
I, I think we should do it. I'll, I'll volunteer.
Okay, I was, I was actually asking our city attorney a question, and maybe it wasn't clear, but, uh, I mean, who, who would write it if we don't?
Any member of the public and then what the city, when the council decides that it wants to be, um, the author, then they're given priority. If the council chooses not to, council members on their own could do it, and then they submit, and they don't have priority. They, and so then it's basically first come, first served. So whoever submits their, um, argument first is the one that's, would be accepted. And I'm talking about arguments against the measure.
Thank you. Thank you. I defer to the mayor.
Yes, um, so Councilmember Gableletti?
Uh, I'm happy to participate in doing this. Uh, I understand there's a kind of pecking order. We've done it. Some of us on council have been on long enough that we've done it in previous, uh, initiatives. I think we should write a ballot argument. But I would like us all to agree to that.
Mm-hmm. And, and you basically would have to do a motion of vote because we'd have to show that the council authorized it so that you would have that priority then. Your argument would be given priority.
Okay.
So moved?
Okay, second, okay. Um, um, Gableletti, Councilmember Gableletti, second it.
Thank you. Councilmember Murphy?
Yes.
Councilmember Gableletti?
Yes.
Councilmember Talamontas?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frutos?
Yes.
Mayor Springer?
Yes.
Thank you.
So then the council, since you've decided that you're going to author an argument, um, and all five of you voted yes, I'm assuming you all want to, uh, sign it, but you may want to decide to, uh, delegate to a subcommittee to actually write it on behalf of yourselves and then all of you would, um, sign it.
So what do you think? I would actually like to participate in that, be a part of the subcommittee.
I'm happy to help you with the draft.
Thank you.
And what we've done before is we just, when we get together, it's strictly to discuss only the statement.
Mm-hmm. Right. So that's okay with Vice Mayor, Councilmember Talamontas, Councilmember Murphy? That we do it and then you...
Sounds good to me. I mean...
Okay. Okay. Yes.
Well, I mean, I'd be happy, obviously, I've gone through this a couple of times with Councilmember Gableletti as well and Councilmember Frutos. Uh, sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to, you know, roll up my sleeves and work together, but I'm glad we got, uh, Tim Murphy, who's an attorney, so he can kind of help us out in that legal scholarship stuff. So I kind of want to recruit him to be one of the legal scholars to work on this with us. I'm in.
Then my suggestion is the three of us, mayor, myself, Councilmember Murphy, prepare a draft. And then we all get together and review that. And if it goes as it's gone before, it usually goes through a couple of drafts because we have word limitations as well. But I think it's a, a great way to start.
That's okay. Yes, Councilmember Murphy?
Could we find out what the word limitations are as long as we're here or would that be using stat?
Yeah, I, I will be happy to forward, um, the argument, um, information as I would make it available, uh, on our website. And I believe, just off the top of my head, I believe it's 500 words. No?
Thank you.
Okay, don't quote me yet because I have to read it. I have, I can look at it right now and let you know, okay? Give me one minute.
Thank you. Thank you.
I might be confused. It might be the rebuttal. That's, because one of them's 200 words.
Yes, um, Councilmember Gableletti?
Um, now that we voted to put it on the ballot, which I think was the right thing to do, um, uh, there is something that really bothers me about the caller, the candidate for council. Um, and, and it bothers me because the Burbank Tenant Rights Committee is identified as a 501(c)(4), which is an advocacy classification. But the papers that are filed with the state of California listed as a 501(c)(3), which is a nonprofit public benefit corporation. And, and I raise this because one of the prohibitions in a 501(c)(3) is no substantial part of the activities of this corporation, Burbank Tenant Rights Committee, so consist of carrying on propaganda or otherwise attempting to influence legislation, and this corporation shall not participate or intervene in any political campaign on behalf of any candidate for public office. And I raise this because I find it highly problematic, as was stated today when Mr. Anthony, that he is a candidate for council and he is the proponent of this particular sign, um, initiative.
Yeah.
I think that's a significant breach of the, uh, category under which this organization was filed. And he is listed as the chief executive officer of BTRC. Um, uh, and it was in April, I guess, of this year, that there is now a new, uh, chief executive officer, secretary and treasurer, who, all the same person, um, who is someone different than either Ms. Raut or, or Mr. Anthony. I just find that highly problematic because in the interest of transparency and full operation within law, we should be following these rules. And for a council candidate to so clearly be part of this initiative and, and potentially in violation, I'm not of the, the incorporation status at the state level, I think is a significant
Thank you. Councilmember Talamontas?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to piggyback on comments made by, uh, my colleague. Um, you know, Mr. Anthony said in his little spiel, three-minute talk, tread carefully, the voters are watching. That's a two-way street, so tread carefully, the voters are watching. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, Madam City Clerk?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. So the, the impartial analysis is 500 words, the argument is 300 words, and the rebuttal is 250 words. I had the 500, but it was for the city attorney. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So, are we finished?
Yeah. Yes, we are finished.
Great, okay. Great job. Thank you very much. Um, we now adjourn to Tuesday, August 11th, 2020, at 6:00 PM for a regular meeting through an online meeting process. The public is invited to view the meeting online or on television, and will be able to provide public comment in the following three ways: by leaving an e-comment on the city website, www.burbankca.gov/ecomments, by emailing the city council, citycouncil@burbankca.gov, or by calling 818-238-3335. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.